Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody. This is our regularly scheduled city council work session for Monday, December 19th. And we're going to start off with our introduction of the new city employees.
It needs battery. It's Christmas time.
And we will take a momentarily pause while we...
Yeah, go ahead.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. It is my pleasure to introduce our new city employees. We're going to start with the Police Department as soon as we get our new speaker. Our batteries.
Can I have you guys stand up? I'd like to introduce, we're excited to have our three new officers, and I'll let them each talk a little bit about themselves here in a minute, but we have James Legler, Jack Huff, and Christian Castrovet. And we put them on, started them on PTO this last week. A few of you met them. We pinned their badges and swore them in. But we're excited to have them, and I'll let them talk a little bit about themselves.
So one thing, guys, I want to let everybody know, make sure you hold that microphone very close to your face, otherwise we can't hear you.
So I'm James Legler. I was born in Denver. Family moved around a lot as a kid. I ended up settling here in Montrose area at 17 with my grandfather, and have been around the area ever since. I have a wife, four kids, and I've really enjoyed this community. Most of my work background has been directed towards agricultural-based work and construction, so I've got to kind of get around the community and meet people that way. It's been a real good place. My kids love it here. All of my kids are smart as a whip and thrive here, and I directly attribute that to the school system because I'm not that smart, so. My wife, she's a Grand Junction resident. She was born and raised there. She moved here after she married me and refuses to go back, so I would say this is definitely kind of been a place she's enjoyed as well, so.
Any good impressions?
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome aboard.
Morning, Mayor and City Council. Commander Cox, Commander Smith, and guests. I was told to keep this short, so I'll just say 30 minutes or so. Just kidding.
You said an hour last night.
My name is Christian Castrovet. I'm fairly new to the Montrose area, moved here on May 9th, and actually closed on the House on May 9th and moved in on May 11th. Originally from, born in Romania, northern part of Romania. Came to the United States when I was young. Settled in New York, then New Jersey, joined the Marines. After the Marine Corps, I got out, went to college, got a bachelor's in finance to minor economics. Didn't have enough in the military, so joined the Army. Got stationed at Fort Carson, Colorado, on the front range. When I got out of the Army, I was an MP in the Army. When I got out of the Army, I started doing overseas contracting for two years with Department of Defense, the other six years with the State Department, doing basically escorts for ambassadors, State Department personnel, a lot of USAID nonprofit organizations, escorting them to different locations, a lot of fun. Guys got great heart and great purpose. So after I left Kabul, Afghanistan, went to repeal, to northern Iraq, did the same thing, except COVID hit, so we kind of got stuck there a little bit. Still did a nonprofit thing with these guys because, you know, helping people doesn't end because it's a pandemic. It still has to, it still has to happen. And of course, I wasn't married until like last year, so I decided, I was like, look, you know, being overseas is great, helping people, defending our interests overseas is awesome. However, I thought that my skills are going to be best used domestically as well. Plus, you know, I was being a little selfish because I want to get married and have kids. I mean, I think that's a normal thing. So, came back, went through the State Patrol Academy, ultimately ended up here, Montrose, and I love Montrose. And the family, just the community kind of reminds me of the town that I was born in, in a sense. And of course, during the time, the hiring process, I re-entered in my masters, so I'm continuing, trying to continue my masters in management with a focus in organizational leadership. And I'm just really happy to be here and really happy that you guys put your faith into me and Commander Cox, Commander Smith, Chief Hall. It's just like a really, it's a great agency to work for, and you'll be seeing me and my kids 25 years from now as well. So that's all I got. Anyone have any questions of me?
Christian, I'd like to thank you for your service in the military.
Oh, thank you. Where's that? Is that God speaking? Sorry. How you doing, sir? Are you still doing those classes, those martial arts classes?
Yes, I am at the Elks Club. I'm teaching martial arts. But anyway, I'd like to thank you for your military service, and anybody else here that has had military service, thank you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. And I think the Vice Mayor, I met her at the recommencement ceremony, ma'am, hi, I'm sorry. I think we met at the recommencement ceremony for this cornerstone here, some part of this Sonic Lodge here. We do a lot of community stuff, which is good. So, thank you, everyone, for listening. I still got 10 minutes.
How's it going? My name is Jack Huff, and I was born in San Diego, California. I moved here, well, not here, Grand Junction, at a pretty young age. Been living there ever since and grew up in Fruta, so small area as well. I grew up pretty community-oriented. I've worked hard and closely with kids that are underprivileged or neglected, and we scholarship them up to camp, a kids camp for free, and we just show them that their love valued and created for purpose. So I've been putting hundreds of thousands of hours into that every summer. And I ended up going to college and got my degree in criminal justice. And then after that, it was just time to find, I put myself through the Police Academy in Grand Junction as well. And what drew me to Montrose was now a coworker of mine, Bridget Clarkson, with the Police Department as well. I went through the Academy with her, and she just shined pretty well and brightly throughout the Academy. So figured I'd try my luck here, and honestly, it's the, you know, same, pretty much the same as Grand Junction, but I like it a little bit better here so far, so. Pretty new here, only lived here for a few weeks now, but that's me, so.
Welcome aboard.
Okay, this morning, got Sean Rossman, is a new member of the utilities crew, and I'll give Sean a little bit to tell about himself.
Absolutely, thank you. Good morning, Senator, Council, and Mayor. My name is Sean Rossman. I have a long history of project management and engineering on the front range of 25 years. After completing that, or our company sold to a bigger company and liquidated ours, but anyway, I moved to Gunnison and bought a campground. And in Gunnison, you're responsible for everything. I mean, the water, the sewer, the cable TV, the electricity, and all the fun customers that you end up with at midnight in a campground. After that, I moved to Montrose about two years ago to help support my family and my father. Ended up in a wheelchair after being in Gunnison, and that wasn't working well for us out there, especially during the COVID, so we had an opportunity to sell and move to Montrose. So I've been here about two years now. I love it. I've been married for 30 years. My kids are on the front range, but they can stay there, that's fine. Less issues, long distance. And anyway, I'm happy to be here, and I love Montrose, and looking forward to getting my feet dirty.
Well, good morning again, Mr. Mayor and Council members. I am happy to introduce LeAnn Whitaker. She's our newest CST in City Hall. Been with us now for two months, roughly two months. She comes to us from Frederick. She's done a great job of jumping in and picking everything up and getting started, so.
Thanks, Eric. Hi, everyone, good morning. I'm LeAnn Whitaker. I'm originally from northern Minnesota, but moved around a lot as a kid, ended up in the metro area in 2002, which was, huh, 20 years ago. That's horrible. But I went to college at CU Boulder for a couple of years and ended up just joining the workforce after I didn't quite find my passion in what I was studying. Spent about 10 years in the restaurant industry, and then COVID happened, and that was the end of that because I was just done. So really got into some administrative positions that I enjoyed, was able to be hired as a finance technician with the town of Frederick, which was a wonderful introduction to local government. And then my boyfriend, who's an ironworker, moved out here to start working in Ridgeway and Telluride, and I wanted to move out here with him, so I saw the posting for this job just kind of happenstance on the city website and was like, oh, that's exactly what I'm doing now, so let's give it a shot. Everything worked out beautifully, so we packed up the dog and moved out here about six days before I was supposed to start working, and I started on Halloween Day, and it's just been a really wonderful experience, and we're very excited to make Montrose our home and build our future here together. So thank you for having me, and I've really enjoyed it here so far.
All right, I'll start with Steven Stolzheimer. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
All right. Steven is in our Parks Division, and he's spent a couple seasons with us as a seasonal, right? And mainly up on our Sunset Mesa, right?
Yeah.
Ball fields up there. So anyway, he started full-time a couple months ago, and I'll let him tell you more.
Morning, everybody. You know, my name is Steven Stolzheimer. Like Jim said, I've been here for a few years now, mostly just doing seasonal work. I've been, I was originally born in Denver until I was about nine or 10. Been here ever since. Last couple years, been bouncing before, bouncing between here and Junction, you know, going to school. I realized that in-person college wasn't really a great suit for me, so I kind of switched gears and I applied full-time here at the city. It's been someplace that I'm already familiar with, and it also allowed me to kind of take online courses for college and also stay focused on kind of working. I need something to kind of keep me occupied during the day, otherwise I kind of go a little crazy. But I love it here, and I get along with everybody, and it's just a good fit for me, so I'm happy to be here.
You're welcome.
And then last but not least, Ashton Jones. He is our new fleet mechanic. This position's been open for quite a while, so we are very thankful to have him onboard, and we've already been, put him to work, obviously, so I'll let him tell you more about himself.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Ashton Jones, I'm the new fleet mechanic. I was born in Delta and had lived in Delta, lived in Montrose for a couple years when I was younger. I started in the workforce as an electrician for a family friend's electrical company, and shortly after high school, I went to the VOTEC for auto mechanics, and I've been doing that for about six years, and I really like turning wrenches, so I'm excited to be working for the city of Montrose. Look forward to my future here. Thank you.
All right, Council, do you have any questions?
No, I'd like to welcome everybody to our wonderful city crew. You're going to enjoy your time here. We have a wonderful team, and welcome aboard.
Keep up the good work.
All right, moving on to our discussion items, we're starting off with a little bit of a heavier lift. We're going to start off with item A, our update on the building code and energy code adoption. This is our chief building official, Archie Byers, City Attorney Ben Morris, and Deputy City Manager Ann Morgan Thaler.
Good morning. I will start, and then everyone will have an opportunity to chime in as we present information to you, and we also want to make sure we're able to answer any questions you have. This is really meant to be an update for you about the process of updating our building and our energy codes. There's no action needed by Council at an upcoming council meeting. We want to make sure that you know what we're proposing and we have your direction and approval before we spend any more staff time on this project. We've been talking for a few years about updating our building and our energy codes, primarily in order to provide some consistency for the regional building community. It's helpful for people who are builders in a variety of communities when they're working with one set of codes across communities, and in large part, that's been possible. The city of Montrose has been on the 2003 building codes and energy code, although we allow contractors to use a more recent version because recent versions are usually more stringent, and Archie can talk a little bit more about that. And the codes that we use and have adopted are listed in the memo. There are many of them, including the International Building Code, the International Mechanical Code, the International Residential Code, and then of course, the International Energy Conservation Code. And right now, all of those are adopted as the 2003 version. We're proposing to adopt the 2018 version of all of those codes. We feel that this will be consistent with other communities. There's a table listed on page two of the memo that shows some of our neighboring communities and which codes they're using. And also, it'll be an incremental update as we move through time. It is 2022. We are on the 2003 codes. We'd like to get to 2018 first before we endeavor to move forward into 2021 or those codes that'll be adopted in the coming years to provide just a step for our community and for us, as opposed to jumping to the 2021 codes, which we could do, but that would be a big change for our community, and especially when considering the energy code likely more expensive for builders and therefore for residents who are purchasing houses if we made that jump. There is a table on page three of your, sorry, excuse me, page four of the memo that shows especially concerning energy codes, how over time, energy codes require buildings to be more efficient so that they're using less energy over time. In a lot of ways, that is excellent. It also can lead to more expenses, and does. Archie will chime in and share a little bit of information about how over time, too, heating systems end up being more efficient as they're required, and then costs go down as these companies are able to more efficiently produce those energy systems, windows, insulation and such. But we want to give the market a little bit of time before, to do that, before we jump to a 2021 energy code. And so in summary, Archie has done a lot of work. We've been working with City Attorney Ben Morris and also Jace, because he works with builders, to make sure that we know the direction to go, and we've contemplated it, and our recommendation is that even though there's a 2021 version of the codes, we recommend that we adopt the 2018 version of the building codes and also the energy code. The added time constraint for us is that we know we need to make this update, and the state of Colorado passed legislation that requires that if we make an update after July of this year, sorry, I forget if it's June or July, June 30, we would need to adopt an energy code that is comparable to the 2021 energy code. So by adopting the energy code sooner, 2018, before July, it does allow us to have that 2018 energy code for a bit longer. The state likely in coming years will have additional requirements based on a standard kind of state version of an energy code, so we anticipate we'll be coming to you sometime around 2026 to update again, but we'll, by adopting before June 30th, we'll have time to use these 2018 codes in the meantime. Also, just one more thing, we anticipate bringing these to you in the spring if you agree that 2018 is the right direction. We're able to make some local amendments, which we're proposing. One of the biggest changes in the 2018 building codes concerns sprinklers, and it requires some residential structures to have interior sprinklers that we do not currently require to be sprinkled. Our recommendation from Archie is that, like other communities have done, and there's a list of those area comparison sprinklers on page two, we would instead require that sprinklers, I guess not require, excuse me, we would make an amendment so that sprinklers are not required in one-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, or townhouses. However, we would include specifications in our code dictating if somebody installs a sprinkler in one of those residential dwelling types, how to do it, so that it is done correctly. So if somebody chooses to install a sprinkler, we have specifications for how that would be done, but it would not be required in all dwelling types of those kinds. Does that sound right, Archie?
That sounds right.
Phew, all right. Archie, may I ask you to weigh in on anything else you might want to talk about?
I think Ann made a really good summary. The key component here is that the state of Colorado does not have an adopted building code that is a state minimum, but they do or have created this House Bill 221362 that Ann sort of referenced that creates the requirement for municipalities when they're updating their codes to currently, prior to June 30th, as Ann mentioned, adopt one of the three most recent versions, so that could be the 15, 18, or the 21, and then after June, adopt the most recent. So really, it's adopting or updating the codes now is our best option to create the most flexibility for the city of Montrose to maintain control over its, I don't want to say destiny, but to expand the greatest ability for our building community to have a positive outcome in terms of the energy code. The building codes themselves really haven't changed all that much. There's always some refinement here and there, some numbers change, they actually readdress or resort it. But for the most part, the building code's fairly consistent. It's the energy code that you're going to see, or the community will feel, and have the strongest reaction to in terms of increased energy costs. And I think that the 18 is consistent with what other departments, regional building departments and jurisdictions, municipalities have adopted, so there's some consistency there which will help the builders across building, across jurisdictional boundaries, which we have a lot of builders who come, or sub-trades that come out of Mesa County, for instance. We have builders that build in the northern end of our valley, and so forth and so on. The other thing you'll see is that on some levels, it'll be an easier implementation for that building community because they're already practicing these techniques in other communities, as opposed to a whole new thing of the 2021, which if you look at that chart on page four of the memo, the efficiency increases of the code cycles have been modest, 1% to 2% efficiency increases over the years between the 9, the 12, and the 15, and now the 18. And then there's a huge jump to the 21 of about a 10% efficiency increase, which isn't necessarily a bad thing, it's just that it equates to additional costs of construction. So again, to reference, going back to that state requirement, it's, to me, it's important that we adopt or look at adopting our codes so we can make control over our future for our community in the best, in the best way possible. And that, in my opinion, would be the 18. The other thing I was going to say is I've been working with the state of Colorado Energy Office, and they have allocated some assistance for us in the terms of providing training if we needed help with adoption. So they've green-lighted some, I guess, funding sources through their third-party contracting, contractors to work directly with us, which has been helpful so far, but it's going to be extremely helpful upon adoption and implementation because we're going to be able to bring resources here to help train our community as to the best possible transition to these new requirements. And that's going to, that's going to have, you know, facilitate the best possible outcome for success and an easy ability to make a positive outcome going forward. And then, well, I guess that's really all that I wanted to summarize on that. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I'd be interested. I'd be interested in finding out later on, as these units become more energy efficient, they also became, become more airtight. And as they become more airtight, there's a possibility of these houses becoming contaminated with bad air, so to speak. I know that plywood, carpet, paint, all those stuff, when they're brand-new in particular, that they off-gas. And if the buildings are too tight, then you're going to have to have, add extra equipment to have these air changes to filter that out. And I would just be interested in finding out later on how the state, when you were talking about dealing with the state and the energy code, how they would address that.
Well, they've actually, they have addressed that. The building code is kind of a convoluted path, but I'll try and be quick so we don't get too, the building code requires a certain level of air changes. Once you drop below that, you have to, you have to provide mechanical ventilation. No longer is natural ventilation okay. The energy code has set that threshold under that requirement. So for the building code, the number is five air changes. For the energy code, you have to achieve a lower level, three, which would require that ventilation requirement that you're talking about. There's several strategies available to you. There's not just one compliance path. So there is builder, the builder or contractor has the ability to choose a path, whether it be an exhaust-only method, a supply-only method, or a balanced ventilation method. Those are all design prerogatives based on their preference, but the, in my opinion, it's a benefit because everything you described is real ed, and we are already probably building at or that threshold, and their current code doesn't require a ventilation, it recommends it, but it doesn't require it. So we're actually probably improving the quality, indoor air quality of houses by this adoption and this requirement. Now, there's some, you know, costs associated with that, but at the end of the day, everything you described about the new materials we're using, the increased tightness, and that directly affects the indoor air quality of a house by providing a requirement for mechanical ventilation, whether it be any one of those three types, you are improving that scenario. So it's a positive outcome ultimately.
Well, thank you. I only got one more question, and it's increase of fire separation between, from three to five feet. Now, is that from property line to the unit, or is that from unit to unit, or what?
Well, the fire separation distance has a specific definition, so it's measured to a property line, to an adjacent structure on the same property, or perhaps, this is complicated, an imaginary line used for determinations by building apartments and designers as to the requirements. So in residential construction, it's almost always to a property line or the center of a public right-of-way alley or street. So in the front, it would be to the middle of the street. In the rear, on a downtown property, it'd be the middle of the alley. To the adjacent property that has a property line dividing the two, it'd be to the property line, not to the adjacent structure.
Thank you. Great job.
The one question I have is, I'm sorry, who is speaking? David. Go ahead, David.
I have a question. As far as the residential sprinkling, have we... I have a question. As far as the residential sprinkling, have we consulted with the Montrose Fire Protection District to get their input on that issue?
Yes, we have. And they aren't in opposition. Obviously, Montrose Fire Protection is a proponent of the most, highest ability available to protect our residences from fires, but they aren't, they haven't opposed us, to my knowledge.
The one question I have is, as we move forward, and I think you got the head nod, that we're going in the right direction. We support this modernization and updating of our code. As we move forward, we're going to have public forums, we're going to have educational seminars, we're going to have the ability for our contracting community to get this updated training and get modern standards kind of put in place and receive this information. And that's what you're referencing, when you're talking about some of the state funding, is to allow us to provide this at low or no cost to our contracting community?
Yes. I think I was referencing specifically training for actual, after we've passed the ordinance requiring the new code for the actual nuts and bolts of where the code sections are and what that looks like. But yes, we are planning on, the intention is to provide those types of community engagement prior to adoption, so that we can get our input from our building code, or our building community, excuse me, not code, that they understand, and we have addressed any underlying concerns they may have as to additions, modifications, or deletions of the code specifically tailored for our community. Every code adoption comes with a version of additions, modifications, and deletions that match the specific needs of the community. I will tell you, our intent is to adopt the code as cleanly as possible with the least amount of those, but I don't know of any jurisdiction that doesn't have some. There will always be some, and some will be just standard housekeeping, and some will be actually tailored to the specific needs of the community.
Very good. Are there any other questions for either Archie, Ann, or Ben?
I'd just make a comment. The state and federal government keeps wondering why the cost of housing is so high, and they keep adding these requirements. It seems, you'd think they'd catch on pretty soon. And some of us lived in homes for a half century or better, didn't have a lot of these things, and we're still here.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thanks for getting ahead of it, so we didn't find ourselves up against that June 31st deadline, and really not having as many choices as you starting to work on it ahead of time. Thanks.
And I do like the idea of us transitioning to the 18 rather than the 21, because it does give us that buffer, and it gives our contracting community time to come up to speed, as it were. And I think that that's a benefit not only to the city of Montrose, but also to our contracting community.
I just have one comment. When we adopt this code, we will have, not just because day one starts of the new code tomorrow, we will have an implementation plan that will allow our building community come into compliance, not necessarily overtime, but we will have an implementation plan, not just the gate shut on one code and the door open on another and figure it out, guys. We're going to build in timelines for compliance, help them through it. Our hope is that we can create an environment that will allow them to succeed to the highest possible ability without it being some sort of draconian type of thing, you figure it out. We're going to help them. We'll be with them every step of the way, trying to figure it out, and give them reasonable periods to come into compliance. It's kind of like churning a ship around in the ocean versus a jet boat or a jet ski in a lake. You know, it's not an easy task for some of these people, and we recognize that, and we'll work with them to the best of our ability. And I think it'll work.
And as Ed and I can attest, as builders and the contractors, that Montrose has always been very, very amenable and helpful, and really supportive and beneficial. So we appreciate that.
May I add one more thing? To Councilperson Reed's question, the next steps you can anticipate from us is that we'll be working at a staff level, very closely with our legal department, to craft this ordinance that will be adopted. And our goal is for it to be really clear code, so that when we adopt it, all of our staff and community members can understand where to go to find the information that they need. And to that end, there's some improvements we'll be making, and one has to do with our fire codes. Right now, there's some confusing language in our codes about who has certain authorities, and so we'll be working to clarify that. I think that's a really important improvement. And Councilperson Reed, please know that we'll be working with our fire district on that part.
The philosophy here is just to keep the adoption ordinance as simple as possible. I realize this is anything but simple, but certainly, there are different ways of looking at how you can adopt these codes. And I think our way of doing it will be to just make this as understandable for the public as possible with as few changes as possible, just enough to make it fit our community.
Having recently worked with the building department, I find the staff quite knowledgeable and workable in the sense that they're not going to just pass or recommend something that's just going to devastate our community cost-wise on our building. As you, we all know, the cost of materials and everything have gone up, and the $168,000 homes in Montrose are no longer there, they're in the 300-plus. And I know that it's nice to have some affordable housing for our community, and that's going to be important for me in the future. Thank you, Archie, for the job you're doing.
Thanks, Archie.
And your helper of the other code, the people in the building and planning department. Thank you.
All right. Great. If there's no other questions, we'll move on to our next item. You don't have to sit here any longer. All right. And Jeremy, if you want to come on up? We have our proposed 2023 Montrose Rec. District City Shared Services IGA, and Deputy City Manager Ann Morgan Thaler, and our Rec. District Jeremy Masters.
Jeremy, welcome. I'm happy to start. It's nice to have Jeremy here. And if you want to talk, you can just click on the light. We come to you every year with this agreement. This is an agreement between the city and the Montrose Rec. District in order to responsibly use our taxpayers' dollars and work together between the Rec. District and the city. So we provide services back and forth between the Rec. District and the city. Those are outlined in the agreement. And really, as an effort to make sure that the Rec. District isn't paying more on the private market for things that the city could provide, and vice versa. We lean on the Rec. District from the city to help with some maintenance of our fields, instead of paying a contractor to do those things. And then also, we benefit our staff with some memberships in the meantime. And so Rec. District staff are able to golf at a discounted rate at our city facility, and our city staff members receive a corporate discount from the Rec. Center, plus an additional discount that we provide here at the city as a wellness program. We're not proposing any big changes this year, but I outlined some of the changes, and the agreement is in redline form, so that you can see what we're proposing to change between 2022 and 2023. One of them is specifying the process for the Recreation District to engage the city attorney for legal assistance. The Rec. District does have their own legal counsel. There may be a time when the Rec. District might want to use our city counsel for something. And so that provision has been in there for years, but we just added to make sure that the Rec. District and the city would agree on what kind of counsel that is, and have a letter of engagement to do it. We contemplated, and the city attorney actually drafted a draft letter of engagement, but we're trying not to make this agreement too complicated and have too many additions. So we don't have that, but we know that we'd talk about that between the two entities if it ever came to be. Last year, the city, in 2022, we provided crack sealing for the Recreation Center facility parking lot. We're able to, at the city, we do a lot of crack sealing, and so Jim is able to add, was able to add that parking lot onto our contract, which saves some money. And it would be hard for just that small area to get cracked sealed under a separate contract. Since the Rec. Center was just done, we're proposing to do the Fieldhouse Facility instead in 2023, and it sounds like that works for the Rec. District, so that's why you see that amendment. And...
Do you have a question on that? That was one item that I looked at, is an item C, when talking about the crack sealing. At the value of the work, there's either an odd comma in there, or we're missing a zero, or a period, because that doesn't make sense to me.
Yep. It is because of how redline works. So when redline crosses out a four, it crosses it out right through the bottom of the four. So last year, the value was $33,400. This year, it is $3,700.
Thank you. That clarification, because when people look at that, that looks like $3,400.
It does. I'm sorry about that.
That's some really thorough crack sealing.
I'm surprised Word hasn't made some kind of a change to make that more clear, but that's what happened there. The four is crossed out, and the seven is the new number.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Also, like we do every year, the Rec. Center and the city update our rates. So the Recreation District has generously agreed to let us know by November of 2023 what their membership rates are, so that we can pass them on to our employees and figure out the additional discount we offer on the city side, so that when we do our open enrollment at the city, our finance director, our HR director can pass that on to our staff, and have our staff know how much a membership would be next year. So thank you for that to the Rec. District. And then we also update all of our other rates. So we work with all of our divisions. You'll see those listed in exhibit. Let me see. Sorry, I'm getting there. Towards the end, Schedule A has all of our updated rates. We included them in redline form. Costs are going up for things. And also, as we acquire new vehicles, you know that we put the replacements into our fleet services fund, and so we account for the costs there. So that's why some of the changes, or some of the costs have gone up, even for using certain equipment. We also specify the actual equipment that's being used. So for example, we had a tractor and mower. Previously, that was, I think, number 46. Now we're using number 337. The rate for that is $46.47, as opposed to previously being 4317. But we try to make that accurate here in the agreement. Jeremy, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Ann, thank you. I believe you represented the changes in the agreement very accurately. This year was seamless in the process. We have the process down. It was made easier this year because there were no large changes. We've met with our respective department heads, and then Ann, Bill, and myself met to finalize the changes. And we're ready to meet bigger challenges next year, or in future years if there are larger changes, but there were none this year. In general, this agreement works. It serves its purpose well through increased cooperation. We provide to our residents enhanced services and decreased costs to the Rec. District, and we appreciate that. And that is due to the cooperation at all levels, from Ann and Bill, and our board, and the council, but also the staffs, Jace, Jim, Greg, Lisa, and Shaney, and all of our staffs work well to make this agreement work well in practice. And so this partnership is real. It's meaningful, and it's effective, and I thank you for helping it continue and supporting it. Outstanding.
And Jeremy, the Rec. Board approved this last week, correct?
Yes, it was officially approved by our board on Thursday's meeting.
So the next steps would be for us to bring it to you at a council meeting for approval.
And that will be after the first of the year?
Correct.
Any other questions from council?
No. By the way, thank you for clarifying. I'm sitting here looking at all them numbers in the...
Normally, the strike-through is through the letter. That one was really under, and it was really weird. Like, that's some pretty good crack sealing. All right. Well, thank you. I really appreciate your time, and we look forward to seeing this at a council meeting. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to our next item is item C, the Klein Addition Annexation. Planner 2, William Reese.
Thank you. Good morning, members of city council. I have a brief presentation to share. I will pull that up on the screen. This will likely be the first of four times you'll see this presentation, so I'll try to be brief. Apologize, just having some troubles here. There we go. So to start, this is our proposed schedule. We plan to bring the resolution to setting hearing day to you on January 3, and then the Planning Commission zoning hearing on January 11, followed by the official hearing on February 7, and the second reading on February 21. The property in question is located just to the southeast of the intersection of 6600 Road and Draft Horse Road. There is an existing address there, 675 6600 Road. The property is within the city's urban growth boundary, the city sewer service area, and Tri-County Water Service area. This proposal would allow the property to connect to the city sewer service. The area is urbanizing, and more than one-sixth of the perimeter is contiguous to city limits. The property is approximately one acre in size. The neighboring properties within city limits are all zoned MHR, manufactured housing residential district, and the remaining properties are outside of city limits. The MHR district is intended to provide a suitable environment for single-family conventional and mobile homes, and is designed to allow a high density of single-family residences and related use. The applicant is requesting the MHR zoning designation for this annexation. Here is the annexation plat itself. This shows the exact property boundaries that would be annexed, approximately 24.48% of the property borders existing city limits, so it meets the contiguity requirement. According to the future land use map of our comprehensive plan, this area is listed as residential mix density low. This provides primarily for single-family homes, but also duplexes and small groups of townhomes. This is intended to preserve the traditional building pattern of residential development in Montrose. According to our growth area map, this is located in Growth Area 2. This indicates the property has some level of or moderate proximity to existing infrastructure. And in conclusion, the area is urbanizing, and the property meets the requirements for annexation. An annexation agreement is required and has been signed by the applicant. Because this annexation is less than 10 acres, an annexation impact report will not be required. The proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare, and the comprehensive plan, as well as annexation policy, and staff will be recommending approval of the annexation and of the MHR zoning designation. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
I have a question. I know it isn't a factor in considering eligibility or our decision, but I'm curious, are they annexing because they had a septic and it failed, and they want access to city sewer, or?
That's correct.
Okay.
And kind of in contiguity with that, is that a lot of our, most of our annexations are led by the applicant?
That's correct. We, for almost all of our annexations, the landowner is the one applying to be annexed. There are theoretical cases where the city can annex land on behalf of the owner. That hasn't happened in quite a long time. We generally don't do that.
We don't use eminent domain for any kind of aggressive annexation process with the city of Montrose unless it's an extreme circumstance.
I think eminent domain would mean we're buying it. That's different.
No, just the forced annexation and that whole process is something we try to avoid at all costs.
That's correct.
Are there any other questions for William? All right. Thank you, sir. Moving on to our final item, designation of official posting location. City Clerk Lisa Del Piccolo.
Thank you, Mayor Frank. Under the open meetings law, we have a requirement to set our designated... Under the open meetings law, we have a requirement to set our designated posting place for our agendas for meetings at the first meeting of every year. We also, a few years ago, there was a change requiring that our website is our official posting place, but we are required to designate a secondary location in case of an emergency, the website's down or something like that. So, we generally designate our bulletin board at city hall, both inside and outside. It's a little different this year because we will be changing city hall locations, but we will have a bulletin board available for the public. So, I'm intending to designate whatever bulletin board at city hall as the secondary location. Usually, we put this on a consent agenda for the first meeting of the year. If council agrees, we proceed in that direction.
I don't see any reason why we wouldn't.
Well, I have a question. It's just, city hall location is changing, our meeting location is changing for three months, possibly longer. There's a lot of changes going on, and I just think maybe in order to really address all of those and maybe the timelines so the public really feels like we are giving them notice of where it's going to be posted and where we're going to be meeting, we could maybe avoid the consent agenda this time so we can get more details about both of those things, where city hall is going to be and where our meetings are going to be, just because it isn't business as usual for 2023?
Okay, we can do that. We can put some information in the meeting package as well.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Yeah, because if I was looking for that information, I might find it on the meeting where we're voting on that, and to have that as detailed information as possible with, you know, subject to construction timelines and whatnot, but kind of have all that information right there, because that's the whole point of noticing the public about where we meet. So, having all of that information in one place would be great.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Lisa? All right. Well, moving on to general city council discussion. Bless you.
That's not my discussion item.
The dust in the air is the discussion item.
Construction is...
Yeah. Any comments from our remote councilors?
Just Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Happy Hanukkah.
Safe travels to you two and anyone in our community. Lots of people travel over the holidays, or their families travel, so safe travels to everybody.
And I wanted to thank both Councilor Reed and Councilor Glassbell for, even though they're traveling for the holidays, for joining us remotely. We appreciate that. That shows a lot of dedication.
You guys have a great holiday.
Actually, I do have a question. Since it involves travel and being safe, and it's something we've heard a lot from our community, and I think there was a timeline that said maybe part of it would be done this year, Scott Murphy, can you give us just a quick update on the signal at the Chapita? And also, I know we're partnering with the county, and they've released some information about the signal at the airport, because I think both are really relevant to safe travel in our community, and I think we have just current information about both of those projects?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the Chapita signal, they thought they might be able to get it done this year. They got everything done except for the poles themselves and the cabinets, and so those are in order. They don't have an exact delivery date, but it's looking like first quarter of next year. Once those show up, it's pretty straightforward at that point. They're just dropping the poles and plugging everything in, and then, you know, start it up once it works. So, I would expect first quarter next year. No hard date yet. Once we do get a hard date, we'll make sure to pass that along. The airport's a little trickier, so reminder for the public, the, you know, Montrose County Airport, they're doing their expansion. They're also working on parking lot reconfigurations and design of all of that. Their eventual access point will be Industrial Drive, across from Industrial Drive, to make that a four-way intersection, which is the entrance to that industrial park there across the highway. In doing that, they have coordination with, so the airport signal is a county project. They're the main loader on that. They're doing the design, permitting, and all of that. So, a couple of moving parts there. One is they have to get that to work, or to line up and get the approval of the railroad because you're crossing the railroad at Industrial Drive there, and then they need to get that to line up with their parking lot reconfiguration project, which they need to get to line up with their operations, so just a lot of moving pieces there. Those pieces aren't coming together anytime soon, unfortunately. I think the proper signal and its relocation is probably at least three years out. So, what they're doing is they're going through the permitting process right now to, NCDOT's working with them to put in a temporary signal at the existing entrance. What they're doing is it's going to be kind of a span wire style that's, you know, we have about two feet of right-of-way to work with before you're in the railroad that they can squeeze it in there, probably put a little guardrail thing, and they're looking to get that up as quickly as possible. Obviously, they don't have approved plans or anything yet. I can't speak to their timelines. It's their project, so I'd be hesitant to throw out an exact date, but they are working to get that done in 2023, as I understand it.
And are we, I know we're a financial partner in the signal at Chapita. Are we a financial partner in the signal at the airport?
Kind of unofficially. So, we've helped out with some of the railroad permitting since that's on our side. Out of our funds already, that was a small expense, like 30 grand or so, but relatively small on the big picture of that project. Long range, I think they are looking to this, I think previous councils have discussed in the name of tourism and safety that they would pledge support, and have talked about in the past, but that hasn't been formalized. And I think once they get their plans and approvals together, that's when I think they would come to council asking for a formal partnering. It hasn't really come up yet because it wasn't going to be in the 2023 budget, and so until they have those numbers and that timeline, you know, we don't want to come in future councils that you guys can be a part of. So, that, unofficially, we've committed to be a partner. The details of that will be worked out, you know, for kind of future budget cycles, as I understand it.
Until we have the hard numbers, we can't really commit to a financial partnership with them, so...
Correct. Yep.
Thanks for, you're always ready, y'all, without any notice.
Sorry for the long...
But like, I started thinking of traveling safety, and then I was like, oh, I want to hear about the intersection, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, that's a perfect segue into staff comments. Any other projects that we would like to hear about? Anything going on that we need to know?
6,700 Road, I know they're putting some cables or doing some work over there on the corner.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that one up. So, that one's kind of of unique timing but unrelated. So, Charter, one of the local cable companies, is running a new fiber and cable line down 6,700 and then going up Sunnyside towards the New Woods Crossing to kind of support some of the future development out there. They knew, you know, our product's coming, so they're trying to get it in and out of the way before we come in with our project. So, just kind of a circum, or a coincidence on that timing. The 6,700 project, though, is out to bid. That was opened January 11. We had the pre-bid last week. Great turnout, so I think that one should be a good bid opening.
Just out of curiosity, on the design, I haven't seen the design of the, are there any provisions for that, the land and that the house, perhaps houses are supposed to be built on to connect to any sewer on Sunnyside or Miami?
Yep. So, the new product will include water and sewer down the run, and then we put stubs in all the locations that are likely to see future development in order to make sure we don't have to cut up the new road when it comes. So, pretty standard practice on all of ours, and this is no exception.
Good job.
All right. Any other staff comments?
Just mentioned, with the holiday coming up, our offices, our city offices are always closed on Fridays. That'll be the same this week, and then city hall is also closed on Monday in recognition of the Christmas holiday. But of course, our police officers are working and available by phone. Our crews are available should it snow or should there be any water or sewer breaks, but our offices are closed on those days.
What's the status of the visitor center? Is it still closed because of construction?
Oh, Lisa left. Yep, they're moving out, and I know Jim could give us an update. Do you mind? And we do not have a location for a pop-up shop yet on Main Street. Lisa and Bill are still working to figure out if we can get a different location while the visitor center downstairs and this upstairs area are under construction, but no additional location now. If we get one, we'll tell you right away, and we'll tell our public to...
If family members were in town and someone wanted a visitor guide or a map, they can grab that at city hall in the meantime, right?
They can, absolutely, and there's a lot of information also available online, and you could contact any of our staff members if there's something needed that we have a pamphlet for, and we could make sure to make that available. Our staff is working in the old PD area within the new PD, so that's already come in handy that we kept that available, and so staff are moving over there, our court staff and our visitor center staff.
Yeah, exactly. We're starting that move today, actually, so you may have seen people carrying boxes, and that's what we're doing, moving OBT staff and court staff from this building into the old PD. So, yeah, like Ann said, it's very convenient to have that right here as close as it is, and it actually is working really well. So, OBT staff would be available right near here, and if they need to meet with somebody, they could do it in that space. There's, we're using the old customer service entrance into the old PD, so the two customer service windows that were there, those will be the courts' customer service windows. So, pretty interesting, actually. You can walk in the new lobby, and then there's a sign right there that shows you just straight ahead to municipal court, and you can walk into what was the old customer service windows in PD, so...
And just as a kind of reminder for our public that the municipal court is relocated because of the construction here, and it is exactly as Jim has just stated out, that if you have a court issue that you need to go to the municipal court, that you go into the old PD building inside the new PD building for court, not just for the visitor center.
Yeah, that sounds confusing, but there's signs up, so, yeah. It just, in a new PD, there'll sign drive you walk in the door that kind of directs you towards municipal court.
And I know we've put out some public notices and some social media posts on that as well.
And more to come.
And more to come, as things constantly change. Very good. Are there any other staff comments or explanations of ongoing events? Seeing none, we're done for this year. Thank you, everybody. It's been a great year. We really appreciate all your hard work. You've made this a very smooth year despite all the obstacles in our way. Thank you. Have a great Christmas and happy Hanukkah.
Same to all of you guys.
Hello.
I want to see the graphic that has that. Here's where the court...